It's six o'clock and I will call the meeting to order if you'll all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and stand for the invocation.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Standing for the invocation, please.
Happy New Year. I was visiting one of the Allen Park car washes that I like to visit and I remembered that my mirror was loose and so right when I was there, I was on the phone with my daughter and I said, "I gotta tell this guy" and I put my window down and right when I did, he turned with the hose and sprayed me right in the face. I mean, and he was shocked and so he stood there and didn't pull it off because... So I'm standing there with water spraying all over my face and she knows exactly what's happening. She's laughing. And I thought about it and I said, "You know what? If that's the worst thing that happens to me all year," I said, "That's okay." Many people are going through many very difficult, terrible things. I've done one wedding last week, I'll be doing another one, a wedding funeral, excuse me, last week. I'll be doing... Depends on your perspective, Joe. Sorry. But I want to just say that as we pray, this is a time for faith and love, a time for us to think about people who need our love and consider the possibility that we need faith in something maybe other than ourselves. Let's pray. Lord, thank you so much because you care about us. We matter to you. If it wasn't so, I don't believe we'd be here. Lord, sometimes the unexpected hits you right in the face, but I ask you, Lord, that you would go with us. I know you do, but Lord, help us to go with you. Help us to consider the possibility of what your love really means, that we can surrender our heart to you. And Lord, I thank you for these leaders who really represent city servants, who really stand in the place of all of us citizens. And Lord, together we make one family. Some in the family are hurting, so strengthen them. Others need your protection and care, so go with them. Be with us today. In Christ's name, amen. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mike, Phil take the roll call, please.
Councilman Marcos.
Here.
Councilman Lott.
Here.
Councilman Schlag has asked to be excused. Councilman Lloyd.
Here.
Pro Tem Lally.
Here.
Councilman Valerius.
Here.
And Mayor McLoughlin.
Here.
We have a form.
Thank you. May I have a motion to correct or approve the agenda for tonight?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Valerius.
Second.
Second by Mr. Marcos. We have amendment to the...
Yes, Mayor. To, I'd like to add a resolution to authorize the mayor and clerk to sign, be able to sign the deed and all closing documents related to the sale of the DPS parcel off Southfield Road.
May I have a motion to accept the agenda as amended?
I make a motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Lally, second by Mr. Lloyd.
We're all out of practice.
Yeah, I know.
We're all rusty.
All in favor? Say aye. Opposed? Thank you. You have, have that mic? Okay. May I have a motion to approve the minutes from the regular meeting of December 21st?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Valerius.
Second.
Second by Mr. Marcos. Any corrections? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, that motion is carried. Now we'll get to organizational business.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Happy New Year. Very good to see everybody and hopefully for a healthy 2022. Just a couple of updates we have here. The Finance Department will soon be starting the budget process for the 2022-2023 budget year that'll start July 1st. Amanda will be working on that, getting everything ready, and then we'll plan to have a schedule probably for you at the next meeting, which will lay out the timelines, which we normally give everybody the budget by middle, the first meeting in April. We have a budget workshop the second, the third meeting in April and then come back with a public hearing on the fourth Tuesday of April for that, for that process. So we'll get that all set up for you and get that information too for the next meeting. Earlier today, we submitted the fiscal year 2022 distress communities grant application. We've submitted for two projects. The first project was the same that we did last year, actually both the same projects because we're looking for more funding on the one. We don't know if we'll get both of them, but we try, you know, throw it at the wall and see what sticks there. But the first one will be for the 40 lead service replacements. Those are the, have been a major concern of the state as well as the City of Allen Park, but it's been a hot topic at the state of Michigan and we think that that's going to be another one that they continue to fund for the, for the future. We put that in for 40 at roughly $9,000 apiece. It's $360,000. We're asking for $270,000 in assistance and we'll match it with 25% or the $90,000 for that, for that project. Last year, we asked for a similar number. The funding was actually reduced a little bit by, I think about 75, by $50,000, but we were still able to get that project moving and we'll have it close to 40 again from that one, hopefully renewal on this time. We also put in for the old Goddard Road water main replacement. That project is roughly $964,000. We've asked for $771,840 and we'll match with 20% or $192,160. That project is not as scalable as the lead service leads because of the length and there's just no breakpoints. It's not like if you're doing Jonas and you can, you know, go from Fox to Cowell and then you can go Cowell to, you know, Parker, back to Rose or one of those where you can have those breakpoints. This one does not have those opportunities, so it really needs to be funded as, as full as possible. But again, if we get a portion of it, we'll, we'll try to make do and come back to council and see if we can move some money around to make that happen. Next one is just some new technology that they're using at the Central Dispatch, Down River Central Dispatch, and that's the text to 911 technology. They're, they're going with the slogans and we'll get this out. I'm going to work with Ed, work with Chief Egan and Jim Thorburn for the PD and it's a call if you can, calling 911 is obviously the best, but it's not always the most possible if they're in a dangerous situation of a domestic or something like that, they need to text. That technology is now there. So Central Dispatch is now participating in that program of text to 911, which means the people just have another way to summon its help to their hel, to their home and when they're in an emergency situation. Just talking to Chief Cannon, Deputy Chief O'Reilly, this may be, makes something where we work with Jim Thorburn from PD to do a Facebook Live and we demonstrate what the process is so people know that this is, the technology is there. Chief Cannon made a great point that this works in multiple languages. So location of Allen Park with the airport, a lot of international travelers, international languages, and we can then be able to help those individuals and not have a language barrier be a problem if they do text it. So something positive in technology is, is finally there to allow for that to happen. The Allen Park Police Department and the Brownstown Police Department participated in a fundraiser for Mimi's mission using our jail facility, or better known as the Allen Park B&amp;B. And it's kind of, kind of interesting that your jail cell is, can be used for a fundraiser because it is probably the nicest one down river. And so it gave an opportunity for, for some people to spend a few hours in the jail and they were either bailed out or, and I believe we had Channel 2, Fox News Detroit's Channel 2, Jessica Dubnik. We also had the principal from the high school and I don't know if I...
John Kelly.
John Kelly?
Yes.
Not the John Kelly from Kelly and Company from back in the day, but John Kelly, principal of the high school. And then Chris, I think it was Chris Tucini. If I'm not mistaken, people bailed out Jessica, they bailed out John and they paid to keep Chris in the jail.
Sounds right.
So I believe he's, he may still be housed there afterwards because I think there was a lot of money being raised for him just to stay there.
Yeah.
And we, he's a great, great guy to have, really a good character and really goes along with everything. And if you did see any of the video footage from that day, the Facebook Live, they did put mints on the pillow for Jessica and made it very homey and that, so they were able to help raise over $56,000 for Mimi's mission on that, that day alone, which was a great fundraiser for them. Allen Park Fire Department and the APPD also worked together to collect over 1,900 pair of pajamas. I'm going to look back to Chief Cannon. Was that 1,900 was for us or total?
I believe that was a total.
Total, okay. So we participated in getting that. That's a great project as well.
... sir, writing rights, we collect the most down river.
For, for those at home, Chief, just let us know that Allen Park was number one collection site for that, so we do appreciate the generosity and the effort of the Allen Park Fire Department and Allen Park Police Department. 1,900 pajamas to help out again with Mimi's mission, so. This one's a big one here information wise. Building Department received a notification from Corby Energy Services that Roosevelt Avenue is tentatively scheduled to close January 24th for approximately two weeks and then there'll be additional time for the hard surface restoration. Corby Engineering Services will be doing some work with DT where they're going to be moving, adding a new conduit from one manhole to another manhole or catch basin area and that's going to require the whole street, the street to be shut down. They're going to have a numerous, we'll help get this out as well, but basically it's going to be closed between the, from Southfield Road to the gas station entrance, but they're going to close traffic back at Allen Road E-course to kind of defer that traffic so they don't have extra traffic coming down there. Police Department and Fire Department are both aware of it. I know Chief Cannon, Deputy Chief O'Reilly, Chief Egan will make those arrangements to whatever they need to do to necessitate their crews to get to the, to the scene of an accident with whatever their means they need. And then this will go back to putting barrels on the area in front of like Baskin and Robin, going that far back on the Allen Road so the traffic is diverted at that point. And then the map there, they'll have, I think the truck route for, will go all the way down to Northline Road. So Dix Toledo and Pelham Road will be those detours down to Northline Allen Road and so forth. We're going to get all that posted up. I'm just waiting for confirmation from Building Director Baker and so we'll get that posted as soon as we have a confirmation on the start date, but it looks like that was the tentative one at this point in time, so. Yeah, we'll post those on the various city Facebook pages so everybody's aware of it and get that information out. Just want to congratulate a few people on some milestone services with the City of Allen Park. We have Matt Doring who reached his 25th year of service on January 2nd. Unfortunately, Matt, well, unfortunately for the city, fortunate for Matt, I believe he's planning to retire here in May and so he'll have his 25 years in and be on his way. Jason Doberton, Police Sergeant from the Police Department, 15 years. He'll celebrate that on the 15th of January. And then Patrolman Jason Wagner, he reaches 25 years on January 23rd. So congratulations to all three of those gentlemen for their efforts and service to the City of Allen Park. And then just finally, we're going to be closed for the Martin Luther King Holiday on Monday, the 17th of January, but we'll be available always if you need us, so.
Thank you. Anyone may have a motion to accept and file the Administrator's Report?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Valerius.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lally. Are there any questions, comments?
Good job.
We got a great team. We got a great team to work with. Oh, as I mentioned before you take a vote, just real quick, we finally worked with Matt Baker yesterday. Thank you, Matt, and also Rob Fulton for supplying some, some zip ties for us. The logo is now behind the mayor's area for the City of Allen Park. We also have put the TVs back the way they're supposed to be and then the large screen TV that was behind the mayor is now on the mobile cart and that'll allow for when Mike's doing any training or anybody else doing any training, they use all the, all the screens that have visible, visibility to the back of the room a little bit better for that point, so. But I'll wrap that now.
Since I don't see behind me.
Yeah, it's nice.
Right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Very much. Now we come to the public comments segment of tonight's agenda and anyone wishing to come up and speak may do so at this time. All we ask is that you provide your name and the street on which you live. We do not want your full address and please do not make any personal comments. We're open for public comment. Since no one's coming up, we will close the public comments. We move on to the consent agenda tonight. It consists of purchasing actions, claims and accounts and payroll as well as finance actions, which are the December 2021 Finance Overview, Budget to Actual Report, Balance Sheet and Cash. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Blevins.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lloyd. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. We come to resolutions. The first resolution we have is a resolution to appoint Penny Ancheff to the position of Assistant to the Building Department Director with an annual salary of $43,000 and title to benefits as provided to City Appointee Administrator's Staff. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Lally.
Second.
Second by Mr. Valerius. Comments we will entertain from?
Yeah, this is a, as we've talked over the past couple of council meetings and other meetings as well, this is one of the final pieces for the Building Department staffing wise, is to move Penny into the Assistant to the Building Department Director position. Penny has served the city for seven and a half years admirably and I think she'll be a great asset to the team in this, in this function where she'll be helping Matt with invoices, paying the inspectors, but most importantly, she's going to be, it's, I hate to say, it's her baby. It's the rental tracking system, the vacant property tracking system, and then she'll be working on the new home sale tracking systems as well. I think we're a nice addition to the team. I think it'll be a great help for Matt in allowing him to, to be able to do what he's supposed to be doing as, as the director and working at that area. Again, seven and a half years here with the city and we really do appreciate what, what she brings to the table for us.
Thank you. Any council comments, questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is carried. Thank you all very much on that and very happy to have Penny in that regard. We have a second resolution that was added to the amended agenda, which is a resolution to authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the deed and all closing documents related to the sale of the DPS parcel off of Southfield Road. May I have a motion?
Motion, Mayor.
Second.
By Mr. Lloyd. Second by Mr. Valerius. Comments, questions? Mr. Caver, fill us in.
Well, I somewhat jumped the gun. I got up to read the ordinance, but, but good timing. So the plan is we are going to close on the sale of that property. The title insurance companies asked for a written authorization, so that's why we're asking for this today. The sale was approved almost a year ago. I think it was in February of 2021.
Thank you. Are there any further questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Now we move on to other business and the first item is the first and second reading of Proposed Ordinance Number 01-2022. May I have a motion?
Motion, Mayor.
Motion by Mr. Lally.
Second.
Second by Mr. Marcos.
Take the vote. To authorize the first, second reading.
Yes. Can I ask for a vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Proposed Ordinance 01-2022, in ordinance of the City of Allen Park Code of Ordinances, amending Chapter 48 Utilities, Article 4, Storm Water and Wastewater Collection and Treatment by the repeal and readoption of Division 4 Designing and Construction Requirements for Stormwater Facilities to update the division. A second reading of Proposed Ordinance 01-2022, in ordinance of the City of Allen Park Code of Ordinances, amending Chapter 45 Utilities, Article 4, Storm Water and Wastewater Collection and Treatment by the repeal and readoption of Division 4 Designing and Construction Requirements for Stormwater Facilities to update the division. And I'm asking for a motion to authorize the third reading by title only of Proposed Ordinance 12-2021 and then they have a public hearing after that.
Motion, please.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Valerius.
Second.
Second by Mr. Marcos. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Third reading of Proposed Ordinance Number 12-2021, in ordinance of the City of Allen Park Code of Ordinances, amending Chapter 28 Parks and Recreation by repealing Section 29-22 Animals Which Pertain to the Prohibition of Animals in Parks and Recreation Area. This ordinance does not repeal Section 6-61, which requires animals to be under the control of a responsible person and requires the immediate pickup and disposable of, disposal of animal waste.
Thank you. Now we will open the public hearings portion for this ordinance. Anyone wishing to come up and speak or ask a question on the ordinance, please do so at this point. Seeing as no one is coming forward, we will close the public hearing area and move on to the next ordinance. I'm sorry. Move on to the adoption of this ordinance. May I have a motion to adopt ordinance number 12-2021?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Blevins. Second by Mr. Lloyd. Questions or comments? Hearing none, we will take a roll call vote.
All right, Madam Mayor. I have a motion by Councilman Blevins, supported by Councilman Lloyd, to adopt ordinance number 12-2021, an ordinance of the City of Allen Park Code of Ordinances, amending Chapter 28 Parks and Recreation by repealing Section 29-22 Animals Which Pertains to the Prohibition of Animals in Parks and Recreation Areas. This ordinance does not repeal Section 6-61, which requires animals to be under the control of a responsible person and requires the immediate pickup and disposal of animal waste. Shall this ordinance pass? Councilman Blevins?
Yes.
Pro Tem Lott?
Yes.
Councilman Lloyd?
Yes.
Councilman Marcos?
Yes.
Mayor McLoughlin?
Yes.
And Councilman Valerius?
Yes.
The yeses have it. It will be published in the matter prescribed by law.
Thank you. We will move to the third reading and public hearing of Proposed Ordinance Number 13-2021. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Lally.
Second.
Second by Mr. Valerius. Any questions or comments? Mr. Caver.
Third reading of Proposed Ordinance Number 13-2021, in ordinance of the City of Allen Park Code of Ordinances, amending Chapter 2 Administration, Division 3 Beautification Commission by the repeal and re, by the repeal of the existing ordinance and readoption with additional provisions to update and clarify the purpose and duties of the Beautification Commission.
Thank you. We will now open the public hearing section for this new ordinance. If anyone wishes to come forward and speak on this ordinance, please do so at this time. Seeing as no one is coming forward, we will close the public hearing section and we will move on to the adoption of ordinance number 13-2021. May I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Valerius.
Second.
Second by Mr. Marcos. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, roll call?
For the chair, I think this was, we sort of talked about this. This was the last ordinance that Pam worked on and maybe we just had the minutes somehow reflect that.
Yes, if we could.
Thank you.
Will we still hold here in the minutes, Madam Mayor?
Thank you.
I have a motion by Councilman Valerius, supported by Councilman Marcos, to adopt ordinance number 13-2021, an ordinance of the City of Allen Park Code of Ordinances, amending Chapter 2 Administration, Division 3 Beautification Commission by repeal of the existing ordinance and readoption with additional provisions to update and clarify the purpose and duties of the Beautification Commission. Shall this ordinance pass? Pro Tem Lott?
Yes.
Councilman Lloyd?
Yes.
Councilman Marcos?
Yes.
Mayor McLoughlin?
Yes.
Councilman Valerius?
Yes.
And Councilman Lott?
Yes.
The yeses have it. The ordinance is passed and will be published in the matter prescribed by law.
And we will move on to the council comments portion of tonight's meeting and we will start off with Mr. Lally.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and thanks for being at the council. I hope everybody had a nice Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. My wife and I went to New York for two and a half weeks and we visited my daughter and my son-in-law and we had a wonderful time there and it wasn't snowing or nothing. It was great until the last day when I was coming home and Wednesday, Thursday morning it was snowing there, so I left right at the right time. It was very nice. And I did live on Long Island, New York, in the city of Rockville Center. It's a nice city, but it's nice to be back in Allen Park, I tell you. Streets are too, too narrow. I mean, you can't even park in the streets where your house is, but you know, they've got some big homes, very nice place to live, but not for me. And I've been, I have been in touch in Facebook, like the city administrator said about the police department and that Mimi's mission. That's a wonderful thing. I want to thank them for doing that, to both the Allen Park and the Brownstown. They're doing an excellent job collecting $56,000, that's what he said, but I, I read it on Facebook, by the way. I do read Facebook. And they helped the, they, they helped those with autism and they do a lot of good things in Down River. They do great work there. In closing, I want to thank you for the, to the department heads and all our workers to keep Allen Park. Good work, they do. Thank you all. So many short things, we'll, they all work very great and I hope so. I got to, let me get this right. I just wanted you guys to be safe, get vaccinated, wear your mask as much as you can because this, this COVID and Omicron is really growing and I don't want all the, I want everybody to be safe, especially the ones that are like the police and the fire and all the workers that, and all the citizens of Allen Park. And then I want to thank you very much for coming tonight and God bless you and God bless all the citizens of Allen Park to keep this city the way it is. It's beautiful. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Tony. Dan.
Not much tonight, other than the fact, just to echo Councilman Lally's sentiments here, working in a public school and many of our students out here, they know COVID has been disruptive to us, to say the least. Sometimes you look in your classroom and it looks like a bomb went off. It's like one person and like the entire area around it. So as much as I would have hoped, you know, a year from now that we'd be kind of past this point, we're, we're very much not, so stay vigilant, get vaccinated if you're able, take precautions when you can, do everything and, and you know, do, do it for your community. I think that this is one, I, I've said it many times up in this chair, that's one of the favorite things that, something that makes this city truly special is a sense of community and that's one of the things that we can do to help each other out. So take care of each other. You know, it's, it's amazing to see the, the charity work the police and the fire are doing, you know, and that's something that we're, is always on top of mind when we're in the holiday season, but it's something that we need... mind when we're in the holiday season, but it's something that we need to kind of continue to be thinking about, taking care of our community, taking care of others, all 12 months out of the year. So, I would encourage everybody to do that, and hope everyone has a great night.
Thank you, Dan.
First, I want to start by congratulating Penny. We appreciate your years of service to Allen Park, and we know in your new position that things are gonna continue to work and run efficiently and smoothly, so we appreciate that for sure. Wanted to take time to recognize a friend of mine, also a person who was really connected to Allen Park Hockey for many, many years, Bill Elvis, who passed away unexpectedly right on New Year's Day. I taught Bill's kids at Cabrini High School, I coached with him at Cabrini High School with the varsity hockey team, and like I said, he was really involved and committed to Allen Park Jag Hockey and the development of programs through hockey, just prayers to his wife and two sons and their daughter. Like I said, it was an unexpected passing, so. I wanted to thank the DPS workers, been out working in this frigid but beautiful temperatures, repairing multiple water main breaks, you know, hey, if I wasn't teaching, that would be a job that I probably wouldn't mind doing, just because I like working out in the cold, so. Also, like my fellow councilman, Dan Lloyd said, appreciate seeing all the students, it's nice to see you come out, even though, you know, it's extra credit and everything else, but it's always nice to see you here. My sentiments are with him as well, you know, it's a pretty stressful life of a teacher right now. You know, we love, we love our jobs, we love doing them, we love being in the classroom, we love being in the school. As I said, I had one class today where I had more than half of my kids were out, and all I could do is reach out to them, you know, whether they're on a COVID positive list or quarantine list of some sort, or if they're just, you know, being kept home just for safety purposes or whatever, you know, these are, you know, like he said, you know, we would have hoped in these last year and a half or two years that things would have been, you know, improving, and instead, you know, we're at the highest rate we've ever been at. All we can hope for is that 2022 brings a change for the better for everyone, and that, you know, remain vigilant in doing everything that we can do, not just for us, but for others as well, so. I want to say it's nice to see all my fellow council members back, minus Gary, you know, I hope that he takes care of himself and that he gets better. It seems like it was such a long time ago, you know, especially like with Charles and Tony being gone last council meeting, it seems like we haven't seen you guys forever, but it's nice to see you back here tonight, and it's nice to see everyone else come out tonight as well, braving the cold and everything else to join us here tonight. With that, I yield my time, thank you.
Charles.
Yeah, it feels forever since I've been here, but I'm gonna try and make, keep it short and stuff, but first off, I saw an article from news here, I, forgive me if I say wrong, the Leo Paluge block grant for a new elevator for, right behind the library and stuff, so again, more positive things happening in Allen Park. I hope everyone just keeps supporting small businesses, the more you support local businesses, the longer they stay in Allen Park. I know, like, the Flowers on Avenue, they just are retiring after 30 years, so it's just, stuff like that, it's just keep on supporting local businesses. I want to say, great job to our Public Service Department with, I know we had a couple days with the snow, and you can really tell which, with the city roads and the Wayne County roads of how well they did and all that stuff, and I, just kudos to Public Service Department, same with our Fire and Police Department, being in these cold temps, and then with this cold weather, please make sure you are contacting your neighbors, and especially if it snows, help your neighbors out shoveling the snow, and just make sure you're just being neighborly and everything, and always just, just keep thinking, I always say stay positive, but lately, it's, I don't want people to be positive with COVID and all that stuff, so it's just like, be optimistic that 2022 will be a great year, it's like, always like, again, you don't know what everyone's going through these days and stuff, I'm so happy that we're still face to face, and please, like everyone said, please, as you can, get vaccinated, and let's try to get this done and all that stuff, and I know, like you said, this time last year, we thought things would get, be better and all that stuff, and then hopefully, this time next year, hopefully, we won't be here, or be doing this with the masks and all that stuff, and, but, yeah, just stay optimistic, and I hope everyone has a healthy New Year, God bless, and I yield, thank you.
Thank you, Charles. Dennis.
My message, again, always the same, really would like to see more of our residents here, we're up here, they're up here, these guys are working hard, the mayor especially, passing ordinances with virtually little to no input from our community. Glad to see the students here, even the extra credit, now get your parents to come. Okay? But, again, as I, I will always say, we need input, we need the residents, we need to see people here, we welcome it, we need information, we need suggestions, we always need help, so, that's pretty much, as I said last time, and I'll say it next time, this is my message every week, please come to these meetings. If, if there's anything you have to say, please come and talk to us, we really need your input, thank you.
Mike, would you like?
Thank you all for coming out, God bless you tonight.
No big, no big elections. Well, as usual, a lot of things were covered, I will get on to Mimi's mission, I did watch a lot of that live streaming, and it was quite interesting, and it was, what was even more interesting were some of the videos of some of the families that have been helped by Mimi's mission, because I really didn't have a really thorough knowledge of what that organization does, and I knew that they were helping police and fire with various kits to deal with problem clients when they encounter them, when they encounter people who are suffering emotional distress, or in this case, having autism. I didn't know how extensive their assistance was to families with children who have autism. And amazingly enough, the woman who started this organization does not have any autistic members in her family, but just because she became interested in it, and it has become a cause for her. But to observe some of the families that have been helped was quite impressive and overwhelming, and I would encourage anyone in this Down River area who has an autistic family member to reach out to this organization, because from what I observed on the videos, they can be extremely helpful to you in dealing with your family members with autism. Cannot speak highly enough about what a giving community Allen Park is, the pajamas, the Toys for Tots, we just fill buckets and buckets, and kudos to our residents on that. The DPS, when we were having our work session, as usual, over the holidays, many of our workers did not have much of a holiday because they were out in some wonderful weather, dealing with some major water main breaks. But again, when we talk about our public services, we need to always remember that our DPS is out there, sometimes under some very trying circumstances. I happen to think of one other thing that came up, probably because I've seen a few ambulances around lately, but I was at another meeting, I was at a board meeting for another organization last night, and one of the attendees could not tell me enough times how very appreciative he was of our emergency responders from the fire department. Apparently, he had some health issues, and he could not say enough about the individuals who came out, the quick response time, and commented on the fact that he moved here from another community, and when he hears people telling him, oh, your taxes are high, he has indicated, and he said he would be willing to come to this podium and make the statement, that he would pay any amount to get the services that he's getting, and he's very happy to be here in Allen Park, and he does not feel as though he's paying too much for what he's getting. And lastly, we're talking about COVID, I think the only positive on COVID, if you look at the state data, is that while the cases are increasing quite rapidly, the deaths are not keeping pace, and the ratio of deaths to cases, the percentage is declining. That being said, if we just take a look at Allen Park, in December of 2020, we averaged 8.9 cases a day. We had a low in July of 2021 of just under one case per day, positive tests. As of tonight, the latest report from Wayne County, the average number of positive tests per day in Allen Park is 39.09. That's over four, that's almost five times what we averaged in December of 2020, and quite a bit over what we averaged in July. We've had 77 deaths since they started reporting on them in March of 2020. Maybe some of us knew people or know people, I didn't realize that I knew someone until I got an email the other day, and apparently, the gentleman who died, who was reported on December 1st is someone I did know. We can encourage people to get vaccinated, there are still people who won't for whatever reason. Theoretically, I think that those who don't get vaccinated and happen to get COVID are acting as Petri dishes and supplying us with new variants. But again, it's your choice. We just ask that you take care and do whatever you can to prevent the spread, because as the teachers have attested, it seems to be hitting everyone. We get reports from the local hospitals, both Henry Ford and Beaumont put out reports, and even people who are vaccinated are ending up being hospitalized, not as great a proportion as those who are unvaccinated, but still, you have people who are even in intensive care because their immune system is compromised, and those are the ones I have the most concern for. At any rate, as Charles said, remain optimistic, trying not to be positive, and with that, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
Support.
Supported by Mr. Lally, supported by Mr. Blevins, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, meeting is adjourned at 6:44 PM. Thank you all, and stay warm.